He's been here. And it changes daily.
I know.
I know, I know. He had to pass in the word. Okay, speakers. Okay, awesome.
They were earlier, they just, I wasn't going to.
Yeah, I would like to see. Appreciate you doing that. Always something. Julie says, a little bit, talk to her. She said, doctor cleared her today. I know. Yeah, outside. The payroll. Get back to her. Okay. Yeah. I actually didn't respond. Right, right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, look, look, uh, look.
I'm delivering, I'm doing what I was told.
I don't. I ain't gonna go look at it. I'm gonna listen to it.
How's it going, son? Home works both ways, brother. We'll talk.
I'm assuming not. Cause he's not here.
Who's that? He's gonna be on Zoom. He's already on, I think.
I'm in, man. Miss Barber.
There's good.
Yeah.
Can you hear him when he talks?
Okay.
Okay, perfect. No, no, that's what we talked about.
Yep.
Let's jam and our call to order tonight's meeting, the Blythewood Town Council at the Manor. Today's Monday, September 27th, the time is now 7:00 PM. I'll ask Ms. Cowan to please conduct roll call.
Mayor Franklin.
I'm here.
Councilman Eddie Ballman.
Present.
Councilman Griff Griffin. Councilman Donald Brock.
Here.
Present.
An apology, Councilman Griff Griffin is on line with us.
Let me hear Eddie.
Right. Absolutely, you're fine, sir. There might be a slight delay, so I apologize, but he's at home on Zoom tonight. Okay, Ms. Cowan, was the notification and posting of the meeting agenda completed in accordance with state law? Thank you. Gentlemen, before you, it's a very heavy and lengthy agenda. We have a lot of business we have to get through tonight. I'll be looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, so move.
Been properly motioned and seconded to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved, thank you. Please let us join Councilman Griff Griffin in tonight's pledge of allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which stands by the nation under God, in the very first liberty and justice for all. You, Father, of God, who have blessed your people with comfort of his heart, come, Father, with thanks for your own, and with all the love of your heart. Thank you, Lord, for the things that you've done for us and the things that you've learned to do for us in the future. Thank you, Lord, for all of your presence, Father, this family has to do, bless this nation, bless this nation to the world without strife and life and support. Thank you, Lord, for what you've done, yes, bless this council, and we need any day to take that decision, um, how to live, pray, come together and make decisions that are going to be proven, all these things we pray to do, bless this nation.
Thank you, sir. And with that, Councilman Griff Griffin will begin with you for council members' remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since we do have a lengthy agenda tonight, um, we want to hold it by a real group, just wanted to say that I saw the big grab, very, very, very well attended, don't know how many people were here, it was really, um, I don't know if I seen it, but from just rock around, I think that it was well attended, and the other thing is coming up, um, next month we have Lockover Fest, and, uh, I guess soon we speak a little over, but I'll tell you that, just we gotta turn it back to you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Sloan Griffin.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thanks to everyone here that's attending and everyone online, um, since we do have a lengthy agenda, I'll make, spare my announcements, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Donald Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, two and a half weeks ago, the nation remembered the tragic events of 9/11, and so, special prayer to those who lost family members, loved ones during that tragic event. 26th August, Blythewood Home Realty celebrated their grand opening at 212 Main Street, new business within downtown Blythewood, that is good, seeing new businesses coming in during a pandemic. On September 7th, Councilman Sloan Griffin celebrated his 40th birthday.
What?
Maybe it was 35.
35.
Happy birthday, Sloan.
Appreciate it.
On the 8th, the Big Red Barn hosted a Warrior Path Program overview and tour, and our own Roger Hovis shared his story with the group, very informative, it was great to see the house completed, the last time we were there, it was studs and nails, and it's nice to see how that's turned out so wonderfully for this community. The 9th, attended the Pathway to Opportunity Luncheon by Goodwill, very informative, as Councilman Griffin mentioned, September 10th and 11th, the Big Red Grab, the Big Grab. 23rd, the Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan was held in the Manor, had a good crowd and some great food catered by Lizard's Thicket, so thank you to them. And also, Blythewood Soccer continues their season every Friday here at Daco Meadows Park, I was here this past Friday. Uh, Mr. Frank Kahoon sent a letter to the town, and I encourage all residents to come out on Friday nights and support our young soccer players. And one soccer player of note, my son Ethan turns 11 on Thursday, so happy birthday to him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have more comments.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tim, Eddie Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I only have a few things, but, um, I did too want to remind everybody, this Friday and Saturday is, um, Oktoberfest here in the park. Uh, Friday night, I may or may not attend because I am volunteering over for Warrior Path, serving dinner to the participants in Warrior Path at the Big Red Barn this weekend. October the 9th, we have a couple of events going on, we have Lake Water Re VFW's got a duck Jeep cruise in with the baloney bash with live music from 6 to 9. It's free to the public, anybody who drives a Jeep knows about getting a duck, so if they want to bring a Jeep up there, you will be ducked. And then, of course, that's the same night that the Big Red Barn's having their big event at Segra Park, and they lost their headliner, Craig Morgan, but they replaced him just recently with Joe Nichols, so I invite anybody who has tickets to continue to support that event, but that's gonna be a really big time to support our veterans, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move to my brief remarks, since we are so busy tonight. I will say tonight will be a bittersweet evening for the town of Blythewood, as, uh, must read proclamations for two leading citizens, Mr. Stacy Brown, Mr. Joe Trapp, who passed away, and, uh, also, we have two, uh, upstanding employees of this town who have special announcements tonight. I learned of these, uh, issues about two weeks ago, but in their confidence, they asked to be able to address the public themselves, so tonight you will hear from both of them. And then the brighter side, the silver lining, we have many citizens here hoping to progress Blythewood in the right direction as we make some changes possibly, as well as bring future events to the town, possibly a half marathon, 5K run, which our citizens are asking for as we deal with this COVID resurgence. Not only do we wear masks and try to take responsible actions, but we also get out and get fit and physical to make sure your body can handle a virus if you, if you get it. So I'm looking forward to tonight's meeting, bittersweet again, but I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and I want to thank the citizens for watching online. Your participation is important to us all. All right, with that, Town Administrator Report, sir, Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a few things I wanted to, um, uh, give to y'all tonight, uh, just a couple on staff, we promoted Jason Mosley to, uh, grounds maintenance supervisor, and we're currently interviewing candidates for his old position, but he's, uh, went right into that position and is doing an outstanding job. Um, just as of today, at 3 o'clock, I think we've got final success on our security gates, uh, out by the Langford, Langford Road entrance, so what we'll do is kind of put out some word that the hours are gonna change from sunrise to sunset, and then maybe following Oktoberfest, we'll actually put them in place after we kind of get the word out so everyone knows how to plan when they come here. And then, uh, you know, we have lots of bigger items coming up, so one thing I want to get with, uh, all the councilmen, uh, on is possibly a work session in January to go over some of those big events, like the, uh, budget for the ARP funds and the earmark from the State General Assembly for Daco Meadows Park, um, as well as, uh, possible use of the 30% state ATAX funds with the, um, Lake Murray Country, which is a regional tourism qualifying organization, and, uh, and then also maybe look, spend some time during this work session, looking at the Manor and its operations and how we can make improvements and efficiencies here. Um, so I'll begin with y'all, I just want to give you a kind of brief heads up on that, and, um, and then also, obviously, that'll be followed by budget amendments, um, for those funds. Like Councilman Brock said, we had a, uh, public input session for our comprehensive plan last Thursday, um, and so what we're moving forward, we're continuing to progress, and, uh, hopefully on November 1st, which is our joint Planning Commission Town Council meeting, we'll have a draft of the comprehensive plan with the goals there for y'all to give comment on. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. We've been moving to item I, approval of the minutes from our Town Council meeting of August 23rd and the Town Council Special Call Meeting of September 16th. I'll be looking for a motion to approve or amend. Make a motion, we approve them both at the same time.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the Town Council Meeting Minutes of August 23rd, 2021, and the Town Council Special Call Meeting of September 16th, 2021. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved, thank you. So tonight I'll ask, uh, Mr. Brown to come forward, are you here, sir? Sir, I'd like to read this for you and your family, and then come forward and present it to you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Office of the Mayor, Brian S. Franklin, Stacy Lamaran Brown proclamation, August 23rd, 2021, Town of Blythewood, South Carolina. Whereas Stacy Lamaran Brown was born on August 5th, 1969, to the late Douglas McCarthy Brown and the late Sarah Lois Brown in Blythewood, South Carolina, and whereas Stacy was a graduate of Spring Valley High School, and whereas Stacy played football, baseball, and ran track in high school, and whereas Stacy received a full scholarship to play baseball for Anderson College and Tennessee State University in Nashville, Tennessee, and whereas Stacy taught in the public school system in Atlanta, Georgia, Columbia, South Carolina, and Lawrence, South Carolina, and whereas Stacy had a passion for youth advocacy and volunteered his time to encourage others to strive to be their best, and whereas Stacy tutored students, provided field trips at no cost, and counseled youth in social skills, and whereas Stacy's enthusiasm for sports and education was enhanced by encouragement and direction he received from family friend and council member Larry D. Griffin. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, I, Brian S. Franklin, Mayor of the Town of Blythewood and the Town Council Members declare Stacy Lamaran Brown an outstanding athlete, educator, and citizen, and commend him for a life well-lived and for the contributions he gave to his family and his community. Therefore, I proclaim the 23rd day of August in the year of our Lord 2021 as Stacy Lamaran Brown Day in the Town of Blythewood. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the Town of Blythewood on this day, the 23rd of August, the year of our Lord 2021. Councilmember, join me, please. Now if I may have the Trapp family come forward, please.
I don't think they should be bashful.
Come on, Bill. And again, thank you all for being here. That's the least we could do for Mr. Trapp. Office of the Mayor, Brian S. Franklin, Joseph Nathan Trapp, Sr., proclamation, August 3rd, 2021, Town of Blythewood, South Carolina. Whereas Joseph Nathan Trapp, Sr. was born on December 6th, 1942, in Blythewood, South Carolina, to the late Thomas Marion Trapp and nanny Eloise Branham Trapp, and whereas Joseph was an active member of the Blythewood Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, and whereas through faith in the Lord Jesus Christ and devotion to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, Joseph honored his covenants. Whereas Joseph was a hard worker, if hard work was a recipe for success, he would be the most successful person around, and whereas Joseph began his career as a meat cutter and eventually started two successful businesses, Red Knoll Landscaping and Joe Trapp Stone Ground, Yellow Grits and Cornmeal. And whereas Joseph was a skilled woodworker, many of his wood projects could be found in the local BP in Blythewood, and whereas Joseph never met a stranger and was well-loved by everyone he met, and whereas Joseph was the happiest when he was surrounded by his wife, children, and grandchildren. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, I, Brian S. Franklin, Mayor of the Town of Blythewood and the Town Council Members, on behalf of our community proudly recognize and honor Joseph Nathan Trapp, Sr., on a life well-lived, and hereby proclaim that the 3rd day of August in the year of our Lord 2021 be known throughout the Town of Blythewood as Joseph Nathan Trapp, Sr. Day. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the Town of Blythewood on this day, the 3rd of August, in the year of our Lord 2021. Join me again. Now we move tonight to Section 3, Discussion Items. We've asked for a presentation by Mr. Will Anderson, he's graciously accepted and come tonight, the Chief Operations Officer for Ritz and School District 2, to give us all an update on these schools. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, happy to be here, thank you all, good to see you all again. Um, I believe last time I was at the meeting, uh, special Bethel, at Bethel Handberry, which is dirt in the ground, and as you, uh, live here and see, it's been a lot, a lot of progress. I'm happy to have with me tonight, uh, the Principal of Bethel Handberry, Ms. Shannon Holland, uh, in the backpack there, um, John Clayton, our Director of New Construction, and our great team from Harper General Contractors, um, Ryan Giles and Javier Salvatore, hope I got that right, Javi. All right, so anyway, I just want to give you all a brief update on a few things that are going on in the district and relate to, um, make sure this is on, helps if it's on, right? There we go. Um, on bet, projects and related to the Town of Blythewood, and first, updates and progress at Bethel Handberry, um, talk about the attendance lines that are going on that are, that is gonna be changing due to the construction and the overcrowding, uh, give you some updates on Blythewood High School, um, I know there's been traffic, uh, surrounding, uh, the Town, uh, Blythewood High and Bethel and Mola Road in particular, talk about some of our long-range planning and answer any questions that you all may have for this evening. Where I'm supposed to point to, there we go. Uh, so some things at Bethel Handberry, and of course, we've got our construction folks here who may be able to answer more questions, but as you've been by there, we've made a lot of progress, they're doing excellent job, we've had two more schools that started about the same time, and these guys are really knocking it out of the park. Part of it is they have a good soil, uh, good flat sandy soil, that's helped, but, um, as well as they've done a really good job, so we're on a good schedule, all you can see the roots will be dry in the dry by the end of the month, um, all brick, CMU, all that will be, is going up and will be finished very soon, um, have all power here in October, um, all the windows and all the curtain wall will be in by the end, end of Christmas, and we'll be in conditioned space by the end of the year, um, which means that we can get flooring and all the interiors done, so we're, we're doing really well. So we'll start overhead inspections here in October, November, so really start looking above the ceiling, making sure our water lines and, and all the other lines are in, uh, final inspections start looking into spring, uh, as we start moving into summer for a school, for the, uh, move-in and opening the new school in August of 2022, and then final completion will be in, uh, January of, around January 2023, uh, when we have to do, remove, start demoing the current Bethel Handberry, uh, putting in the drives and the parking and the, the other play areas. I did want to share a few pictures and updates, um, these are as of, um, 1st of September, uh, you can see the photo on your left is kind of an aerial with the front entrance, you can see, um, how well the roof is got going on, there's probably more work done now, uh, since these were 1st of September photos, uh, the picture on your right is the, all that'll be glass, that's the media center, very nice centerpiece that overlooks that vacant property, uh, to the north of the, of, of, of the property, uh, the picture on the bottom right is a second floor classroom, uh, wing, uh, you can, those are on the back end of the building to the, uh, if you're looking, the picture on the left, the top of the building, so you can see glass, uh, coming at the top, nice, uh, a lot of natural daylight and sunlight in those spaces, so very excited about those spaces. Few other pictures, another angle of the building, uh, there on the, on the left, um, looking from from the south, looking to the north, you can kind of get an idea of where that, on the picture, on the furthest to the bottom of this is the loading dock area with the mechanical systems. You can see more play area be around there. You can see the CMU and brick that's coming in from the, from the area picture to the, to the right, and that bottom picture on your left is a view from the, I believe, the cafeteria or the gym. So with Bethel Handberry, we do have to make changes to the attendance lines. Bethel Handberry is currently about close to 900 kids, and we all know that if you live in, live in this area and go to that school. And so in order to accommodate the changes, we are making attendance lines changes. We're making three, three kind of changes. You can see change one is the Falls Area Subdivision going from Bethel Handberry to Langford Elementary School, that's the proposed. Change two is, and change three deal mainly with Langford Elementary and Lake Carolina and Round Top Schools. You can see those areas. This Thursday will be another feedback session at Lake Carolina Elementary School to provide more feedback on the attendance lines. The Board will hear a reading of the attendance line changes at the second meeting of October, October 26th. The reason this change for Bethel Handberry proposed to reduce their capacity down to about 530, 600, 550 students, but we know how much growth is continuing in the area, so that's why it's, it's going down year one, but with the, with the potential to fill back up into 700 in a few years. And as I mentioned, October 26th is the vote on that and a, this Thursday, Lake Carolina, 6:30 PM, Lake Carolina Upper is a feedback session open to the public. In regards to Bethel Handberry, there's always been this talk, we've had many years now, about what happens next. And so this is my real quick drawing I put together, so if you don't like it, blame me because it was just very quick. But you can kind of get an idea of, from this overhead drawing, like what is, what happens next? What happens with the gym? What happens with that land? I know, speaking to Mr. Williamson, speaking to the mayor, speaking to you all, we've all talked about what happens with the land. I know Richland County Recreation Commission is going through planning. Frankly, everybody right now with the new census data is doing the same thing, really taking the data from the census and determining what's that best land use. For the district, we're, just like we've mentioned from day one, with all parties, we're, we definitely want to make sure we're involved in partnering with the town, partnering with Richland County to really make the best use of that land. For the district, we could use it, we definitely could, for our future uses, but we also understand that if, if it's, if it's a joint effort, we want to partner. And so you can kind of get an idea of where that line would be. I know the road, there's been talk about straightening that road out. Again, interest, you know, we've had discussions with DOT, there's, there's a lot involved with this. So my answer right now, there's no agreement in place, there's no MOU, MOA, we're still in, in discussions with the town, with Richland County Recreation, and internally on what's the best use for that space. But as I've mentioned many times before, we definitely want to partner and, and want to be, you know, this area is a centerpiece of the town, and we recognize that, and we want to be good partners in that as well. And so that's kind of our plan for right now. With the gym, we have redone the roof, redone the HVAC, and the same way with the gym. We are hap, we, we don't have a long-term use for it, but we're happy to continue working with, with different organizations to come up with a MOU or MOA or, or official transfer of the property, just like the transfer if we wanted to go that route. So at this point, nothing's been decided upon, and we look further to continue in those discussions. Whoops. Blythewood High School, we did those additions and renovations. They were finished in August. We are still wrapping up punch list items, still wrapping up some landscaping and some other things. You can kind of see some of the photos here. We've added a fifth house. The school can now accommodate over 2,000 students. The school has added a fifth house wing, which you can see on the bottom right photo. Classroom's on the second and first floor. We've added a multipurpose and like a Kate area on the back. You can see by that bottom left picture is a welding and construction class. That top left picture is a new, the exterior of the multipurpose area in Bly, at Blythewood High School, and that corridor is a new corridor that runs along as well. I don't have a photo in this, in this presentation, but we added a, a weight room, about a 5,000 square foot weight room addition, as well as a large training room addition, state-of-the-art equipment, just in there last week, and if Will Anderson, high school kid, would have not left that place. So it's, it's very state-of-the-art, nice places. We're transitioning with getting all those students into those spaces right now, and so very excited for that. And the landscaping and, and everything will be done by the end of October officially. I know there's been a lot of traffic concerns, and I wanted to address those, Bethel, here at Bethel, Moller Road, and Blythewood. Really, the main problem has been the volume of cars has increased. We have had a reduction in, in bus riders and had more cars that have been on the road. That's been our, as, as we've done the math and watched and done the counts, it's gotten better since the first of school. I think a lot of people have, including myself, kind of forgot, hey, first of school is always a mess, and it has gotten better. But we continue to work with DOT. We've had liaison that works with the Office of School Facilities and Department of Transportation has been out and looked at these sites. We've been in, in discussion with those. We've had Richland County Sheriff's Department trying to set up areas to promote safety. And we're also during this pandemic and during everyone's staff, short-staffed, and our security and traffic guards, we're, we're very short-staffed. So the, the, the short answer is we are well aware of the traffic issues, we are working very hard with our partners, with Richland County Sheriff's and DOT, to come up with solutions. We just continue to ask the citizens of Blythewood for patience as, as we continue to come out with the best, best way to be safe first and then be efficient to get everybody to and from school and to and from work. I don't know where I must be pointing, but I'm pointing somewhere. And then lastly, I just wanted to add for our future planning, we have a RFP on the streets, been about a week and a half now, two weeks, for a demography study. We were waiting for the 2020 census to come out, so we want to hire a demographer to really help us with what our future growth looks like, what's the gentrification look like, what does the current subdivisions look like, so that we can get an idea of the students and really get a student gener, generator number to know what kind of students we're looking at. After that rolls in, we'll, we'll be working on our 10-year facility study, updating it to see if we need new schools, if we need to continue adding on to schools, what that looks like, and if we need to get more land, more attendance line changes. And you can see on the map here where we have, we currently own land here in the, in the Blythewood area, I would say. We own a piece of property on Langford, and, sorry, Blythewood Road and Fulmer Road, Fulmer Road and 21, and then Langford Road and Grover Wilson. And so we, those are our future land that we have currently in the bank. We have another piece of property down on Clemson Road and another piece of property out at Spears Creek Church Road as well. Those are our current ones we have in the bank, but we're, we're trying to get ahead of buying land is very difficult, as y'all know, especially when you need, like a high school needs 100 acres. So it's something we're, we think we're in good position, but we have to be where the kids are as well. And last, I did want to show from a district standpoint, our Performing Arts Center will open up in, will start construction in December, January. It's going to be a district performing arts center. We will host a, a ton of events. This will be as nice or nicer than the, down there on the Coger Center. And so this is something that the Northeast Columbia, including Blythewood, it'll be at the Village of Sandhill by R2I2. These are just some renderings as we're getting very close to construction soon. It'll be opening in 2023, and so we're super excited to, to have this in the county for our students and, and our community in Bly, in the greater Blythewood and Richland, Richland County. And a lot of information on our website right there, richland2.org/about/facilities. I'll be giving a, a longer version of this presentation tomorrow to our school board on all of our bond projects and capital improvement projects. But always, you can find more information there, and I'm happy to, to come to any of y'all's meetings if you like. With that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson. Any questions, councilmembers?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
One quick question. The Creech Road, as the district talked about that, you know, that expansion piece, I think we were on a conference, and they was talking about some land issues coming through on that backside, if I remember correctly.
The only thing we're at right now is we have an easement for a sewer line easement on a, a property owner for, I guess, who's car washed down the street. But other than that, we're, we're still, you know, happy to do what we need to do that makes both sense for the town and for, for the school district. But right now, there's been no movement on the Creech Road since the last time we talked.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Other questions, councilmembers? I have one. Well, as we redraw these lines for the schools, let's say you have an elementary school, you have a child in the fourth grade this year, going to be a senior, if you will, fifth grade, will parents have an option to stay at the school they're currently in, or they be told they have to move to another school?
Oh, yes, sir. That's a great question for the citizens. Yes, if you have a rising senior, be it fifth, eighth, 12th, you, you can stay and finish out, and your sibling, if they're younger, can stay as well, because you know the difficulty of trying to go to two different places. And so, and as well, we have choice as well. But yes, so if any, any rising fifth graders who live in those rezoned areas for Bethel Handberry do have the option. The only caveat is we don't provide transportation anymore, but you can stay and your sibling can stay as well. Great question.
Any citizen comments or questions while Mr. Anderson's here? And we can get ahold of you on the website and send you questions.
Yep, we got, we got there, we've got updates. I know Ms. Holland would, would love any tours when they come open and our team, and so once we get the, the, the finished, they said they'd be finished next week, they give tours, right, guys? Okay. But we'll do tours and do a ribbon cutting and all that like we did a groundbreaking, so excited of that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, Councilman Griffin, please.
The new school, Mr. Griffin, and sorry, I don't see you in person, is August of 2022. I don't know the first day of school next year, but it's August of 2022. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Tonight's second discussion item is a presentation by Mr. Robert Dickinson, District Administrator of South Carolina Department of Transportation. Thank you for being here, sir.
I'm glad to be here to give you an update on SC DOT projects in the area and projects that will be coming up. I wanted to introduce Tony Magwood. He's the resident maintenance engineer from, covers Richland County. He'll be coming up behind me to talk about maintenance issues, incentives in the area. And then Lori Campbell is the district traffic engineer, and she'll be talking about some traffic things up in this area. Okay. Resurfacing, we have currently three, three roads in the Blythewood area that are under contract, and work is planned to start next spring on these. First one is US 21 from Piscatah Church Road to Oakhurst Road right here in Blythewood. That'll be widened two to four feet in some, some of the areas. Smyrna Church Road, three and a quarter miles from Heinz Road to Kershaw County, and that's going to be widened one foot on each side before it's resurfaced. And then Cedar Creek Road, a little over five miles from, from Monticello Road to Winsboro Road, 215 to 321. And that will be widened two feet on each side, so huge improvement on that road. Some upcoming upcoming bridge projects. The 321 Bridge that's been closed for several years is in a tentative spring 2022 letting to be reconstructed. Frick Road Bridge is currently in a letting, November letting this year, be ordered to contract. And then Folk, Lorik Road runs from 321 to 21, is tentatively in a letting for fall of 2023 to be replaced. Some upcoming DOT projects. I mean, Richland Penny Project, I'm sorry. This is a page out of the Richland Penny's Monthly Progress Report, and it shows four priorities in the, in the Blythewood area. Priorities one and two are McNulty Street improvements and Creech Road improvements. And Creech Road preliminary plans are 95% complete, rightaway plans 85% complete, and construction plans 5%. Priority number two is widening and improvements on Creech Road. And that is, well, I just read the ones for Creech Road. McNulty Road is 100% complete, rightaway plan 60% construction, 40% complete. Priorities, that's, that's a sheet in your handout, that's, that's got a lot more information on it from the, the monthly report. The Blythewood Road widening is, design is 98% complete and rightaway acquisition is 70% complete. Okay, Tony Magwood will come up and talk about maintenance initiatives in the area?
Thank you, Robert. Good afternoon. There's a couple of things I just want to bring you guys' attention to. Certainly, the thing that most people are asking is what's going on on I-77? Hopefully, you've been pleased to see the clearing that's been taking place between the county line and Blythewood Road. We're opening the clear zone up, and if you've gone north in the past several months, you've noticed that I-77, that corridor almost all the way into Rock Hill has been cleared. We're opening up the clear zone, and that is the area outside the edge of pavement to allow people and allow motorists, if they lose control of their vehicles, allow them recovery. So we've been doing that, we've gotten down to Blythewood Road. The next portion of this, we started interchange clearing, the volunteer trees that are inside the interchanges. So the next section that we're working on is actually US 21 and I-77. You'll notice we start to clear those areas and make them into mobile areas. Hopefully, there's be some additional beautification projects Blythewood will want to take under its wing in the future. The other thing is chemical limb management. Our secondary roads in this area, we're going to be aggressively clearing the limbs on the secondary roads, both chemically and mechanically during the non-growing season. So between November and March, you will see some significant improvements in the area because of those things. Okay? So those are the two major items outside resurfacing that are going on for maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So my name's Lori Campbell. I am the traffic engineer, but also wanted to touch base with you guys on some upcoming permits. As I'm sure you know, the Blythewood Farms subdivision, residential subdivision by Great Southern, will be coming with entrances on Langford Road as well as Rhimer Pond Road. So as part of our permit process, and I'm sure most of you are familiar, but we work with the developer, look at how many trips we think that development will generate in a day, and make sure that we have them address any deficiencies that will be created. So we try to minimize the impact on traffic by having the developers take responsibility for improvements to the roadway system. So as part of this development, there will be left turn lanes added into the development entrance on Langford as well as Rhimer Pond Road. The other thing that you'll see happening is on Main Street between Blythewood Road and Langford Road, we really need a right turn lane. That can't be added to the right-hand side because of some historical buildings. So the roadway is going to be restriped on Main Street, so the current travel lane will be a right turn lane, and then the current kind of striped-out center will become the through lane. And we think that that right turn lane, even though we couldn't get what we wanted, it's, it's going to make some, some good improvements to that major traffic movement that's going from Blythewood Road onto Main Street and right onto, onto movement that's going from Blythewood Road onto Main Street and right onto, onto Langford. So, you'll see that coming as the developer moves along through their process. There's also a, um, multi-use development proposed at Wilson Boulevard and Community, kind of in that little corner of the, um, interchange. It's right now possibly gonna be gas stations and apartments. We've seen some plans for it, but we're still working through all of the improvements that'll be needed. There will be signal revisions, of course, um, to tie them into the signal on their side, and some minor widening, turn lane additions. Um, Great Southern Homes Jacobs Creek is a proposed residential development. It's actually an existing residential development that's expanding into a new phase. So, they will also, um, be adding some widening to tie into the existing widening to the south. So, those are the big permitted projects that we're aware of that are coming up in the Blythewood area. As far as traffic, um, we have had a few requests to look at Blythewood Road and Surrock Mill Road intersection. That was evaluated by Richland Penny when they did their scope for the Blythewood Road widening. Um, at the time, they determined that it was not advisable to put a signal. That was in twenty fifteen, those traffic volumes. Of course, there's been more growth through there. So, our office is currently in the process of updating the study, getting some more current volumes, identifying whether or not a signal would be warranted. And if so, then we'll work on the process of coordinating with Richland County to see if that is something that can be done as part of the Penny project, or if that's something that, you know, DOT would need to advance separately, depending on their timeline and their budgets. Um, and then, school traffic issues, I know that Richland County touched on it, um, but we are getting a lot of calls about school traffic. And as was mentioned, a lot of times, we see traffic really bad at the beginning, and it kind of tones down a little bit. Um, at most of the schools that we've evaluated, the key problem is there is not enough room on the school property, or not enough paved room on the school property for the vehicles to line up. So, they spill out into the roadways. It's usually in the afternoons. Um, we tend to refer those problems to our headquarters school liaison who works with the county school districts. But one of the things that we, we would encourage parents to do is just wait. Just, just wait till a little closer to the bell. Um, because we do see people arriving thirty, forty-five minutes early to park and wait on the bell, and that's, that's creating some, um, traffic concerns and some gridlock. So, that would be the main recommendation for the roadway network absent any improvements, you know, on site. Um, and certainly, we work with the school districts to recommend ways that they can contain more vehicles on their site, whether that means the cars zigzag through the parking lot or something. We're trying to get them off of the, the DOT roadways. We'll open it up to questions, DOT-related?
Okay. Council members, questions? Please.
Thank you, um, Ms. Lori. Thank you for, um, taking my call a couple of weeks ago about the Blythewood Road and Surrock Mill Road, the traffic light there. Um, a lot of interest in that, um, light there as it was before. It's a growing interest now in the traffic light there. So, I appreciate your office continuing to look into that as well as, um, Mr. Magwood. Thank you for always taking care of, um, Blythewood up here. We're clearing and, and everything that you guys do, even patching potholes. So, uh, thank you for doing all of that.
Other council members? And my only comment is if the budget is a constraint in your department, we, as a council, will try to assist in funding that project. It can't be cost prohibitive for us. I know it may be for you, and you have your priorities, but if that is the holdup, and you could go forward with that project with some funding, then please let us know that. And we would debate it here as a council and see if we can not come up with that money to get that done. It's a safety issue. I drive that road every morning. People try to shoot out into traffic because they've got to get to work. I get it. But if that will save accidents and safety, and it's something we can provide as a funding source, I will certainly look into that.
And that's, you know, that's certainly something, of course, our first try would be with Richland Penny, since they've got a project right, right up to it. Um, we'll coordinate with them, but then also, as we move forward, DOT doesn't do fancy signals. We just do four poles. So, that would also be something that we would be communicating with you guys if y'all wanted to add to or do any kind of enhancement.
Any citizens have comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I got one more. Ms. Lori, one more question. I'm sorry. What's the average cost of a red light if we done one in that intersection? Just a estimate?
So, a DOT-looking signal?
Yes, ma'am. We'll go with that.
Would be like hundred, maybe hundred and twenty. Everything's gone up. Um, haven't priced anything lately, and the prices keep changing. We're getting killed on steel and on poles. Um, decorative, I'd add thirty, forty to that. Um, maybe one eighty should be sufficient. You know, that would be a gracious plenty, I think. Like I said, we haven't done cost on poles for a while, so.
Yes, ma'am. This ball? Yes, ma'am. Yes, the SCDOT asked us to prioritize what we would like, and that's what you saw earlier. That's what we voted to.
Yeah, I don't want to really interrupt, but I got a text message just now that people listening online, if you don't speak into that mic here, they can't hear what's going on. The ones that are watching from home. So, if any other questions, if they could just be answered from the mic, please.
Any other questions? Comments? We do appreciate your responsiveness in both the school district and the SCDOT. I know we've offered helpful hints and advice. That straightening of that lane on Main Street was one citizen input here in Blythewood, and they've actually affected that change, and it's gonna happen. And we appreciate that. Right lane always goes right, and the center lane goes straight, right at that major intersection. I think that'll help. Councilman Griffin and I are still working on, uh, the railroad crossing. Of course, as you know, that takes federal government, uh, leaders to, uh, weigh in that, and that's happening. Uh, we're also, uh, looking at the stoplight for safety purposes on Surrock Mill. And if we need to assist in funding it, and we can do that, certainly, we will discuss that as a council here. And then the Creech Road extension. I think if you get off seventy-seven and turn right and U-turn right, even if you make that a one-way loop all the way around, folks can go that way to Rhimer Pond without ever having to stop. And that would benefit, uh, the traffic flow in the town, and we appreciate you all hearing us with those. Any other comments? We will move to action items tonight. And as we, uh, address an action item, if there's any citizen wishing to speak, just signify that you want to speak, and we'll allow you to do so. Absolutely. The first is, uh, Part A, Discussion and Approval of a Propo- Proposed Road Race with Presentation by Ms. Stacy Weaver. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I'm a, I'm a little short. Um, let me make sure. Okay. My name is Stacy Weaver, and I am a Rotarian of the Blythewood Rotary Club. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce here in Blythewood. And on behalf of, um, the Blythewood Rotary Club, as I do have a few members here in support, we would like to propose a fundraising event, um, for a half marathon and five K run, family run walk. Um, unfortunately, last year, we took responsibility of the Christmas tree lot, and, um, as a good fundraiser for scholarships for our local high schools, um, unfortunately, due to shortage of trees, um, we are, uh, not able to do that, and this is our alternative plan. Um, if approved, we would like to propose that this be an annual event. Um, on top of it being a fundraiser event for the Rotari- um, the Rotary Club, it, I do personally feel like it will bring business to the town of Blythewood. Um, personally, as an avid runner, I always choose local, small towns that, um, have races. Um, I just like to shop local and, um, support the local towns. I don't hardly ever go to a big city. All right. So, race details, we are proposing Saturday, December fourth, um, for a half marathon start time, eight AM, and five K, eight thirty. Um, we would like to start and finish at Doco Meadows Park. We have partnered with Strictly Running to help, um, help present the race, um, have the start and finish line, and, um, chip timing, and they will also do a lot of the marketing, um, and publicity via email, um, website, and Facebook or social media. Um, the duration needed for a half marathon is typically four hours. So, proposed half marathon course. So, this, we would again start at Blythewood, um, in, um, at Doco Park, and I have the directions. So, we would take a, um, we would start at Doco Meadows Park. We will take a left onto Sandfield, um, turn around, head back down to Sandfield, two miles down the road, turn around, and then we would turn right on McLean Road, turn left on Wilson Boulevard, and then we would take an immediate right, um, by Blythewood Academy on Oakhurst Road. Um, then we would turn left on Boni, then turn right on McNulty. Um, that way, it showcases the town. Um, and then we would turn right on Blythewood Road, and then we would hit the Frontage Road, the community road. Um, then we would take a left on Wilson Boulevard and come all the way back down to Langford, um, and finish in the park. Five K proposed, um, course map is really just mainly just in the, um, town of Blythewood. So, we, again, we would start in the park, take a left on Sandfield, then we would take a left on McLean, um, then take a left on Wilson, take that Oakhurst Road, um, to Boni, and take a right on McNulty, and then take a left on Blythewood Road, back to Wilson, and then back in. And then we would come up, um, McLean and come back into the park, um, from the McLean side to the finish line. So, this is just a estimated budget. This is our expenses, um, as we, um, received a quote from Strictly Running. Um, so, the goal, our goal is to have at least two hundred and fifty half marathon participants and two hundred and fifty five K. Um, and then Strictly Running will market our, um, provide all the marketing material, and they will hit, um, so what they do is they have a database of all runners in a three-county surrounding area. So, they're gonna target two thousand Richland County names, Lexington County, um, downtown Columbia, Kershaw County, Sumter, Newberry, and Orangeburg Counties to try to solicit those runners into coming to Blythewood. And then, as you can see, just our expenses from just food, drinks, medals, shirts, and so forth. Go to the income here. So, we are anticipating about eighty-five to nine thousand dollars in expenses, but if we were to charge fifty-five and thirty-five for the half marathon and five K, which is very cheap, um, from personal experience, we will still profit. And then, we're also gonna ask for sponsors to really kind of cover those costs, and we are looking at about a twenty-two thousand dollar profit. Um, if we get the minimum, obviously, um, that is just proposed or estimated. And again, this, um, fundraising event is for, um, to provide local scholarships to our high schools. Any questions?
Questions, council members?
Sounds like a great initiative in COVID nineteen, um, to get out, stay healthy and get fit. Um, and I would challenge each one of us to, um, at least get in the, um, five K, you know, to participate there. Thank you, ma'am, for presenting.
Thank you.
I think it's an awesome idea for the town of Blythewood and for your organization, Rotary Club. I think it's totally supported.
Thank you.
And then, your racing association provides insurance based And then your racing association provides insurance based on the fees that runners pay, so that'll be covered?
So our Rotary Club does provide the insurance that Strictly Running requesting. I've already submitted and got approval for the insurance.
Perfect.
And then I'm just, the only outstanding thing that I really need to do is reach out to Richland County Sheriff's Department just to help with the traffic and blocking off of roads. And then also, we have to have an EMS on site at the start-finish line. So I'm working with Richland County EMS for that.
Questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilman Brock.
Mr. Mayor, hey, Ms. Weaver. So what exactly are you asking?
I'm asking for approval.
To just have a race?
To do the race, because we do have to, we will have to block the roads off. Now, as the last runner comes through, we can open those roads. But I'm just asking the town for approval, or the Rotary is asking the town for approval.
Okay. No funding requests?
We would like funding.
Okay. Well, yes, of course, but no direct funding request?
But I know that this is very short notice.
Yes, ma'am.
And moving forward, and hoping that this would be an annual event, we would like to ask for funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Other than making sure that you look at our process for asking for funding, and there's a deadline date on it, you just make sure you get it in between, you know, on that deadline for next year. And I think we'd be more than happy to support your event, you know, but we do have a strict deadline we go by now. If you put it in, and you get it in by that deadline, I see no problem with this town council supporting you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Griffin?
No. So are we going to make a motion to approve? So, thank you, Ms. Weaver. I'll make a motion to approve for the town of Blythewood to support the event, my use of roads in the park.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. It's been properly moved and seconded to support the road race for Blythewood. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Part B tonight, action items, the Lady Bingo Invitational Final Report for Hospitality Tax.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Williamson.
Thank you. I won't make Ms. Hasterock get up. I'll cover for him. So I'm just going to go down the final report that the Lady Bingo Invitational Golf Tournament provided. It was very successful. It was held on August 23rd, 2021, at Columbia Country Club. Eighteen teams competed, and 150 spectators. Because of COVID restrictions, they couldn't stay in the hotels, but they did enjoy several meals at the Blythewood Restaurants. Total revenue for the event was $6,750, including the $2,000 that the town contributed from hospitality tax funds. And tonight, they're requesting the remaining 20% that was allocated to them when the fiscal year 2022 budget was approved in June.
Comments, councilmember, excuse me?
Let me just start off by saying, they did have a successful event. COVID, we couldn't control, so they couldn't control staying here. When we give this money out, we ask the people that get it to do one or two things, or four things, and they think that they met every criteria here. They check off box A. They had 18 teams, 83 players, 18 coaches, 150 attendance. That's 251 people. They couldn't stay in their local hotels, but they ate their meals here at almost every restaurant we have in town, and they recognized us as a major supporter of the event. I think that they did a wonderful job with the $2,500 that we allowed them, and I have no issue giving them the remaining 20%.
Make a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the 20%.
Sole move.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the 20% remaining. Any further discussion?
One quick question.
Please, Councilman Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity's sake, the, I don't know if this is a question for you, Mr. Williamson, or Mr. Hasterock, but it says net income 2457. Does that include the additional 500 that we're approving tonight or voting on, or is that before the additional 500? Just for clarity's sake, I'm just curious.
You know what? It's okay. I'll call the question.
I can get back to you for sure.
I'll call the question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. 20% is approved. Thank you. Move to Part C and action items tonight, the rodeo final report for the state accommodations tax. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a final report from the Spring Blythewood Rodeo, April 24th, 25th, 2021. Over 4,000 spectators from across the country, as well as Canada and Australia, attended. Heavy marketing and coverage led up to the event, with the town featured prominently as the main sponsor. Tremendous positive exposure for the town. Total revenue from the event was $75,298 and a net income of $9,715. Tonight, Mr. Coggins is here to request the remaining $5,000 that was allocated for this event back in January of this year.
Councilmember comments?
I'll start again, if you don't mind. I think most of us attended. I think it was a well-attended event. Everybody had a great time. I know that I personally spoke to somebody that drove all the way from Rochester, New York, to attend the rodeo. So that's one that I spoke to personally, came all the way from Rochester to attend. And so that tells me that he was here earlier in the year, found out about it, returned trip back to Blythewood, South Carolina. Says an awful lot about the organization that Buck and them run, and that the draw that that rodeo has on people. So Buck, thank you so much.
Mr. Coggins, comments, sir?
Unless there's questions, I really appreciate it. We're ready to go for this next one, but just trying to get through this one.
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Griffin?
Mr. Coggins, thank you again for such a wonderful event. Thank you again, because this is the second time that I've taken my little boy to the rodeo. And the first time, of course, you know, he was still, you know, not even one, but almost two, he could identify, you know, animals, and cow, cow.
When he's 18, maybe he'll be right.
They, well, look here. So we're going to work on that, but I want to personally thank you for myself and my family for having an outstanding event and giving us the chance to see my son enjoy the event. So thank you.
Well, thank y'all, but thank Christie too, because she's here with him.
Christie, thank you.
Yes.
Buck, not just this year, but this was 10 years prior. So this was the 11th year. It's always been successful. So it's not like this was a one-time deal.
No.
We know that you've put this on the successful for 11 times. That speaks to your integrity. That speaks to what you do and your passion, and I thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
There is no other comment. I'll make a motion to approve the 20%.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the remaining 20%. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries.
Thank you, Buck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all again so much.
Thank you.
Part D, action items tonight, boards and commissions' appointments and reappointments. And we have tonight an appointment to the Planning Commission, Mr. Ken Coleman. Did he, is he here? Okay. Met with Mr. Coleman and spoke to him. As a matter of fact, the chairman of the Planning Commission and I went, took him to lunch. We had a great talk. He has a very impressive resume, Army veteran. Currently works as an Assistant Vice President at Risk Technology up in Charlotte, lives here in Cobblestone. And as always, he's a strong volunteer, wanting to help out the community in any way he can. So without hesitation, I recommend him to be the next Planning Commission member.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, comments?
Oh, no comments.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Coleman's appointment to the Planning Commission.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve Mr. Ken Coleman as our next Planning Commission member. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The appointment carries. Thank you all. Now we move to four separate reappointments. That would be Mr. Jim McLean to the Board of Architectural Review for another term, Mr. Paul Mascotti, Board of Architectural Review for another term, Mr. Marcus Taylor for the Planning Commission in a new term, and Mr. Ray Fanton, the Board of Zoning Appeals, next term. Any of those individuals here who'd like to speak? I have full faith and confidence in their service, and I would highly recommend that they be reappointed to their current positions.
I'll make a motion that we approve all four for a reappointment.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve these four individuals for reappointments to their respective boards. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. They are all reappointed. Thank you all. Now we move to E tonight, the second reading of ordinance 2021.010, Discussion and Approval of an Ordinance to Adopt a Revised Business License Ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act 2020 Act Number 176. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is identical to the ordinance presented at last month's first reading. If approved, we'll move forward with preparing to participate in the municipal association's online portal that will allow businesses to renew their business license online. And just a reminder that the current business license year is different from previous years, and that it extends all the way till April 30th, 2022. And then moving forward, the business license year will be May 1 to April 30.
Councilmember comments?
Motion to approve.
Sole move.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance 2021.010. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The second reading passes. Part F tonight, the first reading on ordinance 2021.012, zoning map amendment 2021-02-MA, rural district RU to multi-neighborhood commercial district MC slash architectural overlay district AO. This amendment would rezone property, pardon me, located at Langford Road, TMS number 17800-01-01, which is 10.4 acres. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property is located along Langford Road, southeast of the intersection of Langford Road and Sandfield Road. It's 10.4 acres and currently zoned rural. The property is surrounded by the Town Center zoning district to the north, rural to the south and east, and residential to the west. The applicant is requesting that the property be zoned multi-neighborhood commercial and architectural overlay district, which is a slightly more restrictive zoning district than Town Center. This requested zoning district is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning request at its meeting on September 7th.
Comments? Mr. McKenrick, any comments from the Planning Commission, sir? All right.
I'll make a motion. We approve. Sole move.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance 2021.013. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. First reading passes. Thank you. Part H tonight, first reading of ordinance 2021.014, zoning tax amendment 2021-02-TA, an ordinance amending section 155.183K, Town of Blythewood Code of Ordinances to Add a Subsection Requiring a Maximum Building Front Setback in the Neighborhood Office, Neighborhood Commercial, Multi-Neighborhood Office, Multi-Neighborhood Commercial and Community Commercial Zoning Districts Design Standards, which is found in section 155.183. Mr. Williamson.
Mr. Mayor, we go back to item G.
Did I just get that?
Yes.
My apologies. This is the first reading of 2021.013 zoning map amendment of 2021-03-MA, Town Center District to Community Commercial District CC, Architectural Overlay District AO. This amendment would rezone property located at 500 Main Street, which is TMS number 15214-03-01, .41 acres. My apologies. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at the southeast corner of Main Street and McLean Road. It is .41 acres, and it's currently zoned Town Center. It's surrounded by Community Commercial to the north, Multi-Neighborhood Commercial to the east, and Town Center to the south and west. The applicant is requesting that the property be zoned to Community Commercial District, which is less restrictive than its current zoning, but is still in compliance with the comprehensive plan. In my memo, you will find the additional uses that will be permitted with this new zoning district designation. Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning request at its meeting on September 7th.
Comments? Mr. McKenrick, any comments from the Planning Commission? All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance 2021-013. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries first reading. Now we move to H, the first reading of ordinance 2021.014, previously read. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This text amendment is to correct an omission in our zoning ordinance for the commercial zoning districts. Going through, going through the rezoning process, discovered that these, all these commercial districts, with the exception of Town Center, there's no front setback that's provided. So since parking is required to be in the rear currently, staff is recommending a maximum setback of 25 feet as the front setback for these commercial districts. And Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this amendment at its meeting on September 7th.
Comments? Mr. McKenrick, any comments from the Planning Commission?
One quick comment on this one, and Mr. Williamson is not going to say it, so I will. This oversight was found while staff was looking at our rezoning request. Mr. Williamson brought it to Planning Commission's attention, and we asked staff to go ahead and look at revising this. In less than 30 days, Mr. Williamson had corrected the issue, which he inherited, and had it on Planning Commission's docket at our very next meeting. So I applauded him at the Planning Commission meeting, and don't want to miss the opportunity to do it again. Staff did their job. We appreciate it. Corrected something in our text that needed to be corrected. So job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember remarks?
May I make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented, with a kudos to the town administrator and staff. Sole move.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance 2021.014. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. The first reading passes. Thank you. Line India tonight, Discussion and Approval of the Purchase of Additional Security Cameras for Doco Meadows Park. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you. In our current budget, funds are allocated for the addition of more security cameras in Doco Meadows Park. Ron Paramon of National Alert, who installed our current cameras, has proposed cameras that give much better covers throughout the park, as well as an upgraded system that will assist us in monitoring the activity. Staff is recommending approval of this purchase of more security cameras.
I'll answer questions, councilmembers.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Mr. Brock.
Mr. Williamson, these upgraded cameras and this new system that you're proposing, will it incorporate the existing cameras?
Yes.
Is there, has there been any discussion about actually replacing the current cameras for these new and improved cameras?
There was some discussion. Mr. Paramon's here, and he can answer specific questions like that and give you a much better authoritative answer, but I think that was discussed, but...
Please, come forward, sir, if you would. Thank you.
We did discuss upgrading as needed. We're moving from, some of the originals are 3 megapixels, and we'll be going to 6 megapixel with this new system. And the old ones will be, as they're needed, phased in. I would just wait probably until they start going bad, unless you just want, you know, you're going to see a big difference in the 6 and the 3. So if you want to go ahead and replace, that's fine. If not, you know, we can just wait and phase them in as they go out.
How much more are we talking as far as budget?
How much more are we talking as far as budget if we replace those, the existing ones, in this go around? Just an estimate.
I don't have a count on the existing ones on me tonight. I'd be glad to, let's see. I think there's an existing 49, is it 49? Yeah. So...
It's $450, a good number.
$450 per...
About $22,000.
Yeah. What's the condition, Mr. Hastorock? Is there a need to look at that right now? Or can those cameras that's in place, are they efficient enough to stay in place right now? You look at them more than we do.
Now, of course, it's going to save money if we did it all at one time.
Yes, sir. And that's why I'm asking now, so that we don't have to come back and do this. We're focusing on the security and the infrastructure upgrades in this park to protect walkers and children playing. So I mean, to the council, I wouldn't like to entertain sending this back to look at full replacement.
I'd like to ask Mr. Williamson, do we have the 51-9 to take care of the whole thing? Because we had the 22 to it, we're going to 51-9. Do we have the $51,900?
We certainly have it in the fund balance and for the budget, there is some that it was kind of catchall that I think was about 72,000 that was kind of park improvements that this was, I was going to use this to pay for. So there would certainly be the 51 within that.
You know, I agree with Councilman Griffin and I think that, you know, that's an appropriate expenditure of that fund balance should we need it, in my eyes. I mean, so I would be all for upgrading the whole system all at one time.
And the life expectancy of these cameras?
Seven, seven to 10 years, but you know, if the thing progresses so quickly...
What I was getting at is if we do it and then do a life cycle replacement, 25% every third year or every two years. And then we're all constantly upgrading 25%. So every four years, you have, yeah. Okay. I agree with both councilmembers.
So I make, do we need to still make a motion on that?
And just, I would make a motion to replace them all, I mean, upgrade them all. So... It's up to you.
Since we're doing this and we know it's under the IT thing, we don't need to send an RFP out on it. Can we just go ahead and approve the full expenditure right now?
That would be, that would be simplest.
If Mr. Griffin makes that motion, I will second it.
So if I wanted to make sure, Councilman Brock?
The only other question I have for Mr. Periman is, would that be the only additional expense associated with replacement, full replacement of the additional 49 cameras? Or are there other expenditures that we may not see that may push that number up?
Yes, it will go up a little bit because you will have a little more labor in there and of course, there will probably need a couple additional ubiquities, wireless transmitters to go with that as well, but you know, we're not talking a huge number there.
Are you talking like 10% more?
We're talking about less than, yes.
Okay.
10% or so.
10%?
Yeah.
So you're looking at 53, 54,000 than 51. I mean, that's, that's not a material amount, in my opinion, in the grand scheme of things, but, okay.
So, Mr. Williamson, I'll make a, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve this bid pending the full amount of camera cost and any associated fees with it.
Second.
And probably a motion is seconded to approve the purchase of additional security cameras for Doco Meadows Park, as well as replace the older cameras. Any discussion?
Councilman Griffin, in your motion, you said pending. What, what would, I don't believe that would be necessary. I would, if you're, like, what do you, what do you, what do you mean by pending?
The additional cost and labor cost.
So you just want to do it with adding those labor costs in there?
Yeah.
So I would just say, you know, total.
With the additional, or cap it, say, not to exceed, you know, 60,000 or something like that. It shouldn't exceed 60,000, should it? You know, you could do something like that instead of pending. Pending means, I interpret pending as it has to come back.
Yeah, and I don't want it to come back.
I got it. Let's move on with, we'll make a motion to approve a max amount of $60,000 for camera upgrades in the park.
Second.
Been probably motioned and seconded to approve not to exceed $60,000 for Doco Meadows Park additional security cameras and upgrades. Further discussion? My comment would be, this again is a follow through on objectives that we set in our strategic planning. All of us here wanted to upgrade park security. We have the gate now functioning. We have a fence coming in in two weeks, mid-October, to cut back and curb the vandalism that we've experienced. So thank you all, council. Any further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you. Line Juliette today, discussion and approval of a bid to install irrigation and sod at the depot building. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a bid to add irrigation and sod to the town's properties surrounding the depot building. This will greatly improve the appearance of the area of Doco Meadows Park and provide a nice, well-maintained lawn for the patience of Doco Pub and Freeway Music. It's a project that's being paid for from the proceeds of the sale of this property back in 2019, as agreed upon at that time. Staff is recommending council award the bid to the lowest bidder, T. Edward Cooper Company, in the amount of $40,658.
I'll answer, councilmembers.
T. Edward Cooper's a local contractor. My only question is, and I'm going to defer to our council, T. Edward Cooper and I go to church together. I have a personal relationship with Mr. Cooper. My question to you is, should I recuse myself from this vote? Just, I mean, you know, we do go to church together and we do, you know, I see him on a weekly basis. I just want to make sure that my vote does not, you know, look like I'm voting on a church member, you know, to get this contract.
Okay, there you go. My recommendation would be for you all to vote on whether you believe that he has or should recuse himself, because I think the, the situation there and the circumstances there are pretty remote. I don't, I mean, we go to church with a lot of people. We're friends with the, but I appreciate that you are coming forward with that. If you all want to vote to say you believe he has it, that's still not binding on you. So whichever way you're going to feel the most comfortable ethically with it, I think that's what you should do. However, you're not gaining anything monetarily or otherwise from this.
I just wanted to bring up that we do our church members together and have been for 25-plus years, so.
I don't see an issue with that.
There's no need for a vote.
Okay, if my colleagues feel like it's okay, then I'm okay with it.
Legally, I'm okay with it.
That's good enough for me. So I'll make a motion we approve. So move.
Been probably moved and seconded to approve the bid to install irrigation and sod at the depot building. Any further conversation?
One question.
Yes, Mr. Brock.
Mr. Williamson, on this diagram here, the, the area that's outlined with Sharpie, I guess, is that property owned by the town?
Yes, for the most part. There's a portion of it that is on their property, but I think that was part of the agreement. That was before my time, but the town would landscape the entire thing. So I think it just, it would look strange to not irrigate or, you know, not put sod in a certain portion, just because the property lines don't necessarily reflect.
I understand.
So, but I guess to answer your question, I don't think that those property lines are shown on there, but they are, like, basically the depot building is a separate property and there's a little bit surrounding it that is vegetated that would be sodded.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you. Line Kilo tonight, discussion and approval of a bid to make improvements to the Doco Meadows Park Nature Trail. Mr. Williamson.
Mr. Mayor, the walking trail on the Doco Meadows Park frequently floods, making it unusable, and the town applied for a $10,000 grant with international paper to reconstruct certain portions of the trail so that, among other uses, the story walk display can be enjoyed following a heavy rain. Lowest bid was received was Suncoast Contractors at 5989. Staff is recommending that council award the bid to Suncoast Contractors to make these improvements to the trail with an amount not to exceed $10,000 is part of the request, just because once they start this work, I just think there might be some additional things uncovered. Once they, they're going to actually tear up the asphalt and repack underneath it and there may be more, there might be better, more areas to improve that weren't as part of this original bid. So that's my request to have the ability to use the entire amount.
Thank you. Councilmember, remarks?
I think it's much needed.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been probably moved and seconded to approve the bid to make improvements to Doco Meadows Park Nature Trail. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you. Line Lima tonight, discussion and approval of a bid to add additional playground equipment to Doco Meadows Park Playground. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you. In the current budget, council allocated $15,000 to be spent on new playground equipment. Staff put out an RFP for a, an ADA accessible zip line and received four bids. Lowest bid received was from Churchits Recreation for $13,809 for the equipment shipment and installation. Staff is recommending that council award this bid to Churchits Recreation for $13,809. And I just want to add a side note, RFP also requested a price on putting a cert rubberized or artificial turf surface for a portion of the playground, and so that's part of these quotes. These same companies provided this, but this was not a budgeted item. It was just an opportunity to get an idea about how much this was going to cost. And then if council wants to use funds to pay for adding a surface to a portion of the playground, then, you know, we'd bring that back for council approval. But this is just for the additional equipment.
Comments or questions, councilmembers?
I do, I do want to thank you for, you know, we talked about this a long time ago, but I do thank you for checking into ADA compliant playground equipment for our children in town. I think it's much needed. We should have addressed this before, but I'm, I'm very happy we're moving forward with it. And I want to thank you for spearheading this and getting, you know, the ADA stuff in there, Mr. Williamson.
Councilman Griffin, you have comments?
I'm just going to echo what Councilman Baumann said. Thank you for the effort and thank you for the work, sir.
You're welcome. And I think everyone will enjoy. This is definitely a popular piece of equipment.
As I said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been probably moved and seconded to fund the additional playground equipment to Doco Meadows Park Playground and award the bid. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you. Line Mike tonight, discussion and approval of the purchase of electrical services for Christmas lights. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in July, council approved the plan for Christmas lights around town and I-77, but, you know, as we started our planning, realized that we don't have electrical power out there at the interstate and, and so we need to take care of that immediately. Electricians are actually really hard to find right now, but Snipes Electric has submitted a proposal to install electrical outlets around Interstate 77 in order for us to have our planned Christmas display for a total amount of $8,500. Staff is recommending that council approve the allocation of funds from the state accommodations tax fund balance, since this is a permanent installation of electrical lines at this location that we'll use for many years to come.
Comments, councilmembers?
Motion to approve, sir.
So move.
Been probably motioned and seconded to approve the purchase of electrical services for Christmas lights. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion's approved. Thank you. Line November tonight, discussion and approval of a request to sponsor a baseball tournament for Westwood High School. Mr. Williamson.
Westwood High School has requested a $5,000 sponsorship of a tournament, a baseball tournament in February 2022. This is a request made outside of our normal application process for hospitality tax events, so just bringing it to council for a separate approval.
I'll just make a comment here. I spoke to Coach McDermott about this. I told him that we had a deadline and that this may be problematic. However, he informed me that he just received approval for this tournament. It's not like they knew it was coming. He asked for it. I told him it would be a one-off and exception. I also told him that I would support it, simply because we're supporting Blythewood High School with a tournament every year. I would also appreciate supporting Westwood High School, similar to what we do with the Battle of the Bands and the band competitions. Both high schools receive support. And due to our deadline and he did not have approval from School District Two yet, recent School District Two, he just received that approval and that's why he's asking for the funding. I am in support. Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm going, I'm going to abstain from voting on this due to a working, personal working relationship with Mr. McDermott.
Thank you, sir.
I will not be voting.
I'll make a motion to approve, even though it's an, it's an exception to our rules. It's no fault of his, what he had to do. And so I think with two baseball events in our town would be just that much more of a plus to bringing people into town. If actually, if he, he brings 11 or 12 teams in here, I think, you know, that would, or six teams, that would be good. So it's a smaller event, getting started. I, I'll make a motion we approve the $5,000. So move.
Been properly motioned and seconded to approve the request from Westwood High School for a baseball tournament. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want clarification that we'll be paying for that out of the hospitality tax funds.
Thank you. Thank you. We move tonight to part five, open citizen comments. Mr. Brock, were you going to read this letter or would you like me to for the soccer?
Oh, sure.
Please do. I forgot to read that earlier and this would be appropriate at open citizen.
Thank you, I got it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
This is a letter from Blythewood Soccer to the town of Blythewood. Says, "Good evening. When we first came up with the idea of starting a community-based soccer program in the town of Blythewood, the challenges looked daunting. The cost of operations, the lack of field space, the lack of RCRC support in the area, and the open threats by other local clubs were a lot to overcome. When I first reached out to the town administrator at the time in the local chamber of commerce, we were received with welcoming arms. Without this support, our program would not exist as it is today. We have grown from nothing to having over 100 players, that's actually low, it's closer to 150, in each of our seasons and even more playing during the summer. This helps build not only the sport in the area, but also the community as a whole. Adding a healthy and active sports community regularly brings people into the town to spend money, but also adds property value as more people would like to move to the area. Thanks so much for the use of the fields. Steve and his staff have been a joy to work with. The park is a shining beacon of what a park could be if the county would ever invest in the infrastructure in our area. Thanks more recently for the $1,000 you donated to our club. This will allow up to 10 players that may not be able to afford to play the sport a chance to join in this community. As we grow, we are looking toward our continued partnership. Again, without the support of the town, none of this would exist. I would like to encourage the town council, the mayor, and all staff to come out on some of our games, game nights and see the community coming together to make this happen. Have a wonderful and blessed day. Sincerely, Frank E. Cahoon III, President, Blythewood Soccer Club." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you, sir. Another success there. Proud of that.
Very nice letter. Donna and I drove through the other day when they were practicing over here, and I mean, it was just tons of people. Nice to see.
And I'll read a letter from the Christian Assistance Bridge dated August 30th, 2021, Town of Blythewood. Dear Town of Blythewood, your generosity is truly inspiring. Thanks for your, thanks for your gift of six thousand five hundred dollars on August 25th, 2021. It's a blessing for us to have the opportunity to care for so many families in our area. Because of you, we've been able to give out forty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-nine pounds of food this year. One of the women you helped was a single mother who went through traumatic rape and soon lost her job. She's been fighting hard to keep her living situation and utilities. We gave her financial aid to help with her apartment rent and connect her with sister care for more assistance and food to feed her and her daughter. She is truly an inspiration for how much she's trying to stay afloat. Thank you for giving her hope, assistance, and we will continue to provide her food and whatever else she needs in the upcoming months. Last month, our shelves were low, and within three weeks, we had three groups bring in food drives and individuals bringing in a few bags of food every time we were open. So, we're almost complete and full again. However, we still need toiletries, canned beans, canned soups, and canned meat. Together, we can feed families, help them financially with keeping a roof over their heads, utilities on at their home, and more importantly, help create a plan of action to not only recover, but to thrive. That is our commitment, and I thank you for being part of it. Many blessings. Kate Williams, Executive Director." Very nice letter.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something about the cab?
Please.
Wonderful organization. I sent several people by there during the, either the pandemic that some of the, the needs did not really fit what the cab does. But I tell you, Ms. Williams was so helpful and so, her mindset in helping this community is futuristic. This lady, she had trees that were hanging over her home that were just, no wind, they would knock limbs off. And she did not live in the town, but she's in the zip code. And that's part of that annihilation conversations we've been talking about. But she tried several different ways to get this done and could not get it done. And I sent her there after talking to Ms. Williams, and they made it happen. But also in that progress, they figured out she had more needs than just the tree. And I tell you, that's a great organization, and I took the time to go through and see what all they do and also learn that it's not just people. It's cats and dogs, and the amount of dog food that they give out in this community, food for cats, is, is a tremendous amount of food. So, what a great organization.
Thank you, sir. Now, we'll move. I know we didn't have anyone sign up, but are there any citizens here? Yes, ma'am. Ms. McLean, please. Yes, ma'am, if you would, please, so they can hear you at home. Thank you.
First of all, I want to, my name is Frankie McLean, and I want to thank the town so much for the play area for the children, and I'm looking forward to the improvements. I would like for the council to look at the sign that is currently the playground area just for the children. I'm not sure, but I don't think it says, "No dogs allowed." I've seen dogs in the playground area where the children play. That might be something we need to think about, particularly with the fact that we will have it accessible to a lot of our handicapped students and children. So, I think I may be in error, but I looked at the sign briefly, and the sign is quite faded and would like to see what the council might want to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Comments, council members?
I would just assume that service animals would, would be included.
I'm sure. Mr. Williamson?
I can check on, I can check on that, but also, we did just replace that sign, so it's, it's brand new. And, but I'm, I'm not, I can't recall whether it said, "No dogs allowed" or not.
Okay. Just let us know, please. We'll certainly, any other comment?
I just think that's something that we should look at, you know, especially if we invest in the rubberized pieces there on the playground. We don't want to, that's a lot of money if we go that route. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. We do love our animals, but there is a place. Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up to our attention. Okay, any other open citizen comments tonight? All right. Any online, any texts from any council member? Okay. Okay, with that, we'll move to Part Six tonight. Execu... Go ahead, please. Please, Councilman Griffin. Please, yes, sir. Floor is yours.
Okay, this is a letter I have, and it's sent to the State Department of Defense, 2021, as Mayor Franklin, Mayor Brian Franklin, and Brian from Town Hall. As a matter of consideration, I am regretful and proud of the 2021 Mike and Town Hall's success. We have enjoyed the past six years, and we have made a positive contribution to the town. I'd like to thank our citizens for believing and for understanding we are late. My thanks also go to the staff and the council, the former mayor, Mike Olson, and the new president, Mayor Brian Franklin. But this is tremendous opportunity, and it's one of the other major, third, highest of the top ten. I wish the council staff, town, and the citizens, 2001 six, to see your progress and success in all that you do now. This is not before late, and I am grateful for your service. I will be available to the city. Don't hesitate to contact, respectfully, and repeat, Chris, Richard, and Mike from Town Hall.
Thank you, Councilman Griffin. It is regretful. I have asked you several times to reconsider because we need you, and we will call on you because we know you're right down the street. So, I say thank you, sir, for a job well done. And you've still got several months, so don't go anywhere before the election. Councilmember remarks?
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Griff.
Was, was a pleasure serving with you these last six years or so. Thank you so much.
Thank you to my senior, although I'm, I'm the younger, more shinier head version of you. But thank you for your wisdom and your knowledge on council, sir. And thank you for assisting me in my process of onboarding to this council. I won't say that I, I will miss you because I'm gonna bug you, and I know where you live at, so I'll be a frequent visitor. So, thank you to you and your wife and family.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We're now moving to executive session for, A, receipt of legal advice relating to claims and potential claims by and against the town and other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, and Part B, discussion of employment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee. I'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion we move into executive session with a small break.
So, move.
And probably moved and seconded to start, begin executive session with a five-minute break. Any other conversation, discussion? We, we will reconvene, and then if the council wishes to make an action, we will do that after. I'm not sure. There's nothing on the agenda that I know of for a motion, but we will come back, and it is possible. Any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Take a five-minute recess.